Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at six oh one. At this time, I'd like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say welcome, thanks for coming, to our May twenty-third School Committee meeting. Because we are in after an election, today's first meeting is a reorganization meeting. So I will start the process of the reorganization by taking nominations to elect a chair. Once the chair is selected, I will turn the meeting over to the new chair, and the new chair will continue the process of reorganizing by taking nominations for Vice Chair and Secretary.
I'll make a nomination to nominate Tim Canada for Chair.
I'll second that.
Are there any more motions to, oh, do we have to accept that?
No, most second, yeah. Now you can ask if there are any.
Are there any additional nominations for Chairperson?
I'll make a motion to nominate Ron for Chair.
Any seconds? Since there are no seconds, nomination refers back to Tim Canada. And a motion is made to close the nominations?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of closing nominations? Let me get the numbers. Okay. So, public roll call for Chairperson is now in order, Mrs. Omasa.
So I get yes or no?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Ryle?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Canada?
Yes.
The meeting is now turned over to the new Chairperson, Mr. Canada.
All right, next we nominate the accepting nominations for Chair.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a nomination to, for Chris Hickman for Vice Chair.
Second.
All right, any other nominations? All right, so we move to close nominations?
So moved.
Second? All right. Anyone, do we need a second, Ed?
No, yeah.
Do a public roll call.
All right. No, we don't need a roll call to close the nomination.
Oh, no, sorry, yeah, yeah.
So, all in favor of closing the nomination? All right, public roll call for Vice Chair. Miss Omasa? Mr. Ryle?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman?
Yes.
I will also, Mr. Canada, I will vote yes. Uh, now, nominations for Secretary. Do I have a nomination? Right now, I will nominate Christie, she's better Secretary. Do I have a second in my nomination?
I'll second.
All right, uh, do we have any other nominations? If not, uh, we can vote to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations for Secretary?
So, so moved.
Oh, then thank you.
Yep.
All in favor of closing?
No, second, second, second. Need a second.
Second to close nominations, Chris? All in favor of closing nominations? All right, roll call vote. Let's start at the other end, since here's the nomination. Mr. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Canada says yes?
I'm a yes.
All right. Now, uh, move on to recognitions. So while you're looking for that, can I start with the recognition for Margaret Hanson, who really led the fundraising efforts for the Washington DC trip? So, want to thank her from the School Committee for helping get that trip together and getting a lot of kids help to go to Washington DC.
Yep.
No idea if this mic is on.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to recognize Anna Roberts. She is the Director of Student Services, and her last day will be this Friday. So I want to thank Anna for her service, and she's been here since August, but she's moving on to, uh, new adventure. So I'd like to thank her for her service, and we appreciate all she's done for us here in Norfolk Field.
All right, Student Advisory Council, Joe?
Oh, okay. So, for the last month, we've been on events of student councils. So, we had Teacher Appreciation Week. Teacher Appreciation Week took place Monday, May second, to Friday, May sixth. We recognized a different part of our staff each day, and made all the staff breakfast on Friday. Um, Earth Day Cleanup, the Norfolk Field Town Cleanup took place Saturday, April thirtieth, uh, at the Town Common. Students, the Student Council teamed up with the Environmental Club to clean up the town. Spring Conference, Spring Conference was Thursday, April twenty eighth, at Oakmont High School. This event was similar to our Fall Conference, where all Student Council members are welcome to go and learn new leadership skills. Lock-in, uh, Lock-in is an event where members of the Norfolk Field Student Council bond, do workshops, and participate in leadership activities. This year's Lock-in was on Friday, May thirteenth, and was an overnight event. For new information, we have Junior Conference. Junior Conference is an event for upcoming seventh graders, where Student Council members lead leadership activities and workshops for soon-to-be middle schoolers and show them our school. This will take place on June first. And, um, finally, the new local Student Advisory Council representative will be Laura Orne. She'll be taking my position next year.
Congratulations. Well, Laura. We'll miss you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we're happy to have Laura joining us, so. It was Laura, not Lauren.
It's Laura, yes.
Is it Laura, okay, all right, thank you. All right, approval of minutes for the School Committee Regular Meeting, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Make mushroom approve. Second.
Any discussion on, uh, minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? Unanimous? Correspondents?
A couple of correspondents I'd like to pass down. You have a copy of this in your folders, but a thank you from the students from the Washington DC field trip. So I actually wanted to give you all a copy to take a look at the hard copy, but you do all have a copy in your, in your packets. I also, we had a correspondence from the Town Accountants stating what our balance was going to look like at the end of the year, and how we need to move forward to make sure that we are balanced at the end of the year. So when we get into our budget discussion, I will continue that conversation with you with some data for us.
It's a very nice thank you card.
It is.
They got a lot of ground covered during that trip. I think we have a presentation on that a little later, too, right? So, it'll be good to hear about that. Public participation, anyone have anything on the agenda tonight they'd like to talk about?
I would Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Damian Saret, for Burke Field Teachers Association President. It's May twenty-third. We teachers have no idea what's happening with the budget. In the past, with so many of our former superintendents, union leadership was always consulted, made aware of budget concerns, potential cuts, et cetera. We often worked as a team to find ways to save and salvage staff, and programs to minimize the impact on our students. Since the budget is on the agenda tonight, we are hoping that the following questions and more will be discussed. We know there's a considerable amount of money, excuse me, considerable amount of money in the S R three grant. What is the district's plan for said money? How much will be used to offset next year's budget deficit? We assume there is some circuit breaker money. Has this been figured into the budget? If so, how much? What, if any, school choice money is available? If staff, if staff cuts are forthcoming, are they going to be equitably dispersed among the various departments? Teachers, custodians, ESPs, superintendents, office, et cetera? Is there a plan to inform staff of any potential cuts that may happen? Contractually, teachers need to be notified by June first. In closing, it's both disappointing and infuriating that the superintendent has decided to work in this fashion. It is our hope that we may return to a more open and transparent process in the coming years. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Um, I just had a question about Anna Roberts leaving. As far as his parents are concerned, we haven't heard of any replacement, and we're wondering what's going to happen in between the time that she's gone and in between the time that we hire someone new.
Sure, me as it. Anna is leaving the end of this week. We actually have, um, a teacher who is in the district who will be happy to, who will be stepping in for a couple of weeks. Um, most of the IEP meetings already been covered, so in a bit of emergency, it will be Mrs., I can't even say her last name, Mrs. Max.
Backwards.
She will be the one, yeah. She will be there to, uh, to support us. And we will be starting interviews, um, hopefully by the end of next week, is what we're looking to do there. Okay?
Anything else? All right, School Committee reports?
You have presentations.
Sorry, presentations.
Because theirs is first, it's backwards. Can I have you up here, Mrs. Hanson? I will tell you what's standing in front of this.
All right, um, we just wanted to give you a recap of the Washington DC trip. Nathaniel Stonehouse is here to talk about some of the slides that were put together. Um, my daughter and I can put this slide presentation together. The first, um, slide, so we went to see a lot of memorials, no?
Yeah, on the back.
Yeah. We went to see a lot of memorials. Um, so we would go see something like Iwo Jima, and our guide from World Strides would give us all of the background information we need to know when we went to see these. So the kids were, um, it was so exciting to watch how impressed they were with what they were seeing and learning. Um, on the right-hand side, uh, that was when they went to, um, that was in front of the Supreme Court. So, the group actually got to go into, um, Representative Scalise's office. They got a tour, there were no tours of the Capitol that day, of the, the main part of it, but, um, because we were linked with a group from Louisiana, their representative let them go in. I actually was on the bus at that time with a student who was under the weather, so I didn't get to see that, but I know that Nathaniel went in. And, um, actually, his mom, Tanya, went on the trip with us. She was one of the five chaperones. So we had this awesome team. But Nathaniel's going to tell you about the next couple of slides, so.
We're waiting, thank you.
Thank you. So, here was our first stop, uh, on the way down from Massachusetts. This week, when, uh, we were able to get out and stretch our legs and trust me after a long ride. We were very thankful for that. And we were able to, uh, look at the Washington Monument, which hopefully, as you can tell, was a, a very fantastic view. It's a lot of fun, and that was just the first day. We were able to explore the grounds of the Mall area, which was a lot of fun. Now, this was the next day, uh, we went to our International Cemetery. Now, we were able to go to the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and some of the students there were able to lay the wreath. Now, if you were able to see, I was actually one of the people who were able to lay the wreath. Um, and some of you were wondering how we're able to do, able to lay the wreath. Um, we had to write a paragraph on why we'd like to do that. Now, what I had said was, um, I just wanted, uh, well, I wanted to be able to honor not just the person who was in the tomb, um, but also to, uh, express how grateful I was for country and how, um, thankful I was to be living in a free country. And I also found that the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier resembled freedom and all those, all the others who had fought and lost their lives. And I, anyway, I was able to pay, uh, pay that back with, uh, some sort of, uh, respect with, I was all for it. Now, this was the Albert Einstein statue. This was one of the many statues we were able to, uh, go and visit. And, uh, just like all the other ones, it's a lot of fun to be able to, uh, this one, we were able to interact with a little more, but, um, all the other statues we were able to visit, um, was always, uh, it was a lot of fun, a lot of history to it. But that was, that was another one. Uh, this was Mount Vernon, and for those who don't know, that was actually George Washington's home. And, uh, for me, it was really, really fun. I mean, we were able to actually tour the grounds of Mount Vernon and the actual house. And, uh, the thing that struck me the most was the fact that when we were in the house, we were able to walk where George Washington, at one point, might have actually been working, doing his things and helped building a, uh, country, which, that was a lot of fun. Now, this was in front of the White House. Now, a lot like, um, Mount Vernon to me, it was, uh, it was really neat just to be able to look at the grounds where the president, for roughly the history, throughout the history of our country, would make major decisions for the country, and, uh, it was a lot of fun to be able to see it.
So this last slide is just, um, on the top left, those were our freshman six. So we had seventh, eighth, and ninth graders go, and, um, it was just very astonishing. Well, I shouldn't have been astonished, but they bonded, and they were so independent, um, and just, I don't know, it was just nice to see. That's the class that I'm a class advisor to, so it was nice to see, um, how they represented us in Washington DC. On the right, um, is, um, Mr. Hatch, who's our high school English teacher, one of them. And he had a, an excellent group of guys, too. Uh, down the bottom left was the Marine Museum, which, um, I have to say, the students were fascinated with. It was just, in there, I saw a, um, exhibit, and I had my, my student who was a little under the weather, we kind of took it slow and whatnot, and it just was amazing to me to see how much that, everything they saw resonated with them. So it was really a good, um, good chance to watch them grow up. I mean, it just was, was wonderful. So, um, the other pictures, there's another group picture, and then, um, at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. So, I just want to reiterate how wonderful it was for the kids from Norfolk Field to be able to go to DC. Um, and hopefully, we can have a trip next year. So, you'll be hearing from me again soon, maybe in June. Um, takes a while to fundraise, so probably you'll hear from me next month. But, thank you for your support, and, um, I just think you should be proud of your kids, so, I am.
Hopefully, this presentation kind of kicks that fundraising off pretty well, because this is, these are nice pictures of, they had a good time. Does anyone have any questions, or?
I'd just like to say thank you for taking them and organizing it.
It was quite an undertaking, and we cannot totally exhaust it, totally.
Sorry, buddy.
Yes, exactly.
Scary part is, if you think about how little of that city you actually probably saw percentage-wise, you can go there every year with the same group.
Kurt's right. Kurt was like, he, I don't know if he's, is he like teleported or what? But he was there and nobody here, and he's, he was like Energizer Bunny. He was, he was a fantastic tool bag, and, and I had an awesome team with me, so it was good.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation for the after-school program?
Thank you, Sarah. We have, um, Mrs., uh, Ms. Coris Boyer. Um, she's doing it solo today.
I am. I'm Coris, I run the AM PM program for the last two years. Um, I love the kids, love it. We have so much fun. We actually have one few more kids than we used to have. Um, we do a good job. So, we're going to give you just a bit of an overview. Our AM program runs from seven fifteen in the morning till eight AM for people that might need to drop their kids off before they go to work. Um, the PM program runs from two thirty to five PM. We usually hold it in the library. When it's gross outside, we go to the gym. And it's really nice, like today, we went outside. Uh, parents utilize the program when they require extra coverage, um, for their kids, whether you've got one or two. So our current rates, um, and these are a few things that I'm hoping you guys can help me resolve. We have, if people qualify for free lunch, so currently, there's three tiers of pay, which is, if you qualify for free lunch, your AM is a dollar fifty. That's a dollar fifty for the forty-five minutes somebody comes in. If you qualify for reduced lunch, it's two dollars and seventy-five. Out of the, I think we counted maybe twenty families, only two actually qualified for reduced. So we either have, we've got a lot on the free lunch, or full. Um, qualifying for the full rate, it's four dollars for the AM. Uh, PM's a little different, so the price goes up, but it's two and a half hours in the afternoon.
Next.
Here we go. So, we did, we crunched the numbers from September and from April. So, the free rate in September, we had roughly, um, six kids that were free. In April, up to nine. I had fifteen kids this morning. So there are some days that we are packed, and I love it. Our reduced rate, we didn't have any in September, we don't have any now. Um, for P, uh, for AM, for PM, we do have a couple. And then the full rate in September, it was for AM, just three. April, three. And in September, we went from five to eight. So as the slide shows, it says our attendance continues to increase each week. There are some days, like Monday, Tuesday tends to be a heavy day. So I was with twenty-two kids this afternoon. We're wonderful, we have a great time, so much fun. Um, but I believe when I took the program over, it was minimal with kids. Um, our tend, attendance continues to increase. Um, and all of these numbers right now are just the average. So we also crunched our numbers for what money came into the program and roughly what money was going out. Income typically for, in September, for the morning, ninety-eight dollars. More people were free lunch than they were full pay. Um, in September, PM, we brought in more money. April, because we have much more kids, the bring, the bring-in was one fifteen fifty. PM, five twenty-nine. Money out, so that means is what's to pay for staff. We typically have one person in the mornings, just because it's forty-five minutes, it's right before school, and it's pretty mellow in the mornings. In the afternoons, there's two staff, because up to twenty kids, that's, well, actually, there's some day grid twenty-five. That's a lot for one person. So that's why we have the money out just an average. So, we're proposing increasing the rates. We did research of other programs in the state to see what they had, where they have it, um, how much. So Spencer East Brookfield, for one day a week, it's eight dollars. Five days a week, thirty-eight dollars. For PM, as you can see, you know, it's five days a week, fifty dollars. They do get discounts for sibling, um, siblings, and they do have a registration fee of fifty dollars per family. Uh, Berry, twenty spots available, and I think it's, it's a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifty-five a week. Um, we added Mendon Upton, and even though that's a bit more of a, I'm not sure how to say this, like expensive district where it just has a little bit more money, we've got, two days a week is eight hours a month. Um, and we've tried to figure out the breakdown to make it easier for you guys to understand. Um, they do have a late fee, ten dollars for the first five minutes, and a dollar for each minute afterwards. Um, multiple late pickups removes from the program. If tuition's late, there's termination from the program. If tuition's not paid in a certain amount of time, um, so there's some things that, from the Mendon Upton, I think that we're going to try and incorporate, not necessarily when it comes to funding, though. These are other ones, um, I know Quab and I had called them, and they're actually looking to outsource the program because there is no staffing, and their hours, I believe, are like six-thirty or seven in the morning until six PM at night. Um, not sure we could do that, but I know that Quab and just, they don't have the staff, because it's all school staff that runs that. Wachusett, um, I have friends that are still in that district. It's very expensive, um, and they have one, I think it's Lindwood, has what's called Safe Place, and Safe Place, it is run by the high school kids. So it would be one adult, wherever they work in the district, um, who manages the high schoolers who then manage the kids. I'm not so sure that would work here, but we're willing to discuss whatever we need to. Um, and these are the ones were just different programs that we had researched. So our program fees have not changed since two thousand and fifteen. I believe it's longer. Um, I did get in touch with Sheila LeBlanc to find out, because she would have been the one to know. Um, she doesn't recall one at least in six years. Um, so this is just a graph of where things could be if we were following the things that kind of we can follow from here on out. Could it each year perhaps be an increase, um?
Are the numbers on this side the number of families?
I think that they are. Probably.
Yeah, okay.
So this is our proposal. The information that we have gathered, this is what we would like to do. We would like to raise our free, first of all, we want to combine the free and reduced. So instead of having three tiers, because there really is, like, perhaps two families that are on the reduced, um, but to combine our free and reduced rate to six twenty-five for the AM, eight dollars for the PM. The money sounds alarming to go from six dollars and fifty cents to eight dollars, but we calculated things, and if the program had gone up fifty cents every year, then we might be closer to where we were looking. I did speak to the previous superintendent, um, on two occasions to see if we could raise the rates and was met with a no. I'm okay with that. Um, we are proposing a one-time registration fee, oh, let's see, for twenty-five dollars. Um, and that would just be a one-time, everybody puts it in. Some of the things, like, when I think of budget, we're not looking at making money, we're just looking at keeping what we have. But there's a lot of things that happen in the AM PM program that we do a, usually a holiday party, that comes out of staff pockets. We do an end-of-the-year party, that comes out of staff pockets. Um, we're not looking at earning, I would just love to have a bit of buffer zone so we could get new things. Because currently, everything that we have in the PM program for games, toys, you know, anything, is either donated or the staff is bought. So I would love to have just a little bit of buffer so that we could have some fun things. The kids do a great job anyways, we make our own fun, but it would be nice to have some other things like tangibles that we could use. Um, we're proposing tuition late by fifteen dollars or more. Um, I mean, fifteen days or more to raise it. Uh, currently, we have an issue of people not always paying. If someone comes to me and says, hey, I don't have enough money this week, can I give you twenty dollars? Absolutely, we are okay with that. Uh, but there are some people that just choose not to pay, and this can go on for a while, and it, it becomes a drag for me and for them. Um, so we were hoping that we could have at least some kind of fee. If you're going to be late, it'll cost you. Maybe it'll give them some incentive to move right away. Um, a late pickup fee, ten dollars for the first five minutes, a dollar for each minute, um, afterwards. So I had spoken with Mrs. Priestley earlier in the year to discuss a late fee, because there were some parents last year that because there were some parents last year that would show up at five-thirty. They're like, oh, there were no apologies, nothing. So we decided this year that we would have a tuition, not a tuition, a pickup fee. Because there are some people, and if they call ahead of time, awesome. We know ahead, things happen, emergencies happen, no big deal. But there are some people that are, it just doesn't matter if they pick their kid up at five-fifteen or five-thirty. And I have a long day, most of the staff have a long day, and it's nice to know at five o'clock that you can actually go home. Some kids end up taking a break from the program. That means like if their parent is late picking them up three times in a month, they get a break. It's not always two weeks, two weeks. Behavioral issues, I had a student today, unfortunately, we had to say, you have a break for the rest of the week because of lots of problems. And even lack of communication or payment. I tell everybody, if you're stuck, just tell me. I would be happy to hold off on it, you know, we're not gonna send the letters. Usually when a parent's at least a month past due, we will send letters home with the kids. And then tuition from the, termination from the program. I've only had one student that's been terminated. Everybody else, we work things out. But if tuition is too monthly, underpaid or unpaid, like I said, if people wanna just communicate, hey, you know, I'm really short, or my dad had me in the hospital, whatever. Just talk to me, and we will make it work. Thank you guys very much for your time. On there any questions?
Do you mind if I add something?
Absolutely.
So just another piece to, I think, what we're trying to do with the program too, is to elevate the program in a way that works for parents and families. I know that Coris and Tammy, who works for the program also, do a lot of the bookkeeping and registration, either by paper or on Google Sheets. They have ways of keeping track of all of that. A lot of the other after-school programs in our area and beyond utilize online registration platforms. You know, parents can pay online, but those platforms cost money. And so by raising our fees, we might be able to explore some of those options, which would ultimately make it easier for parents to register their children, pay online, things like that. So there's a lot of potential in raising the fees to elevate this program and really grow it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm looking for, is just being able to have these kids have a vibrant afternoon. I think Mrs. Hanson even said she was usually out at the softball game when they have it. She's like, I hear giggles. I love seeing stuff on the playground. We have a lot of fun, and I just want the kids to be, continue having fun, but not have to have the games that are missing a puzzle piece or don't have things. We would just really love to have some extra. That's kind of the basis of why we gave, you know, the numbers that we did in order to be able to fund it. What comes in is what should go out, but even just getting a little bit so that it really comes down to the kids.
Are there, do you know of any, I know there's the, the free lunch program is kind of what this is based on. Is there, are there programs if, what have, we're obviously dealing with cost versus demand. Is there programs that can supplement this in case it becomes kind of cost prohibitive?
There are grants, but it would have to be somebody who's, you know, researching grants and doing that.
They don't work.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm seeing this.
TCO is on those materials next year.
Thank you. I have something that, I'm sorry, do you wanna go first?
Okay, do you mind if I ask a question?
Of course.
I have two quick questions. And I know, I actually just got like a few, like three different families who are watching this right now, texting me, freaking out, saying they're not gonna afford it. But, and so like, is there any way, at least, because most other communities who have this program, the ones that you've mentioned, they accept vouchers from the state, the, I can't remember what it's called. Northbrook is actually one of the only communities in our area that doesn't accept the school-age vouchers for childcare. So I feel like if you're gonna raise the price, then you should at least be willing to do the paperwork.
So she know, we'll have, we'll have to, like, we'll have to visit that, we have to figure out rates first and then.
Well, I'm saying like, if you're gonna raise the rates, there's gonna be so many people who aren't gonna afford it.
Absolutely. We can absolutely explore whatever we need. Because for me, it's not about not having people come in. I want the kids. And I don't want somebody to say, oh, it is cost prohibitive. That's not the point. For me, it's just making sure that the money that comes in is the same money that goes out. And like I said, we just have a little bit of a buffer.
So yeah, the first thing I wanna say is, I, I've seen the benefits of the program firsthand. There's socialization, there is movement, and the kids are having a good time. But there's also that part where it's a necessity. So for us working families, there's nobody at home in many families. We need somebody, we need the program to be able to be that after-school care. So with looking at the increase myself, looking at the numbers, because there was a concern, we do want the community to, to know the cost. You know, and we wanna do it both ways. We wanna take a look at the cost and see which numbers, you know, we saw your proposals were, and then how can we help, like with new items? You know, that is something that the community I'm sure would be able to do. We've sent out lists before for items that we have wanted for the school, and we have gotten them in, like the books, everybody cheered in, chipped in in the community, and we got what we needed. But with looking at the cost just as an idea, so to do the, and I only looked at the full-time rate. The ten dollars is, is a fifty percent increase. That's, you know, a harder, I think that's, that's where the feelings are. But what about if it was like eight dollars, which is now a twenty-five percent increase? Eight dollars if you have full time, it's forty dollars a week. And it kind of benefits everybody. So that fifty dollars, that ten dollars for fifty, ten dollars per day for five days a week, may be steep, or again, that's that bigger increase. But maybe if, you know, we just kind of look at the numbers and work with them, and you kind of kill two birds with one stone. You have the increase because the staff are worthy. I've seen the staff with the children. It is, there is something special there. So I'm not saying not to support that. And then I also think we need to find a way to, to support what you need. You know, that's Mrs. Warner, you know, for the list and for the parties. You shouldn't be doing all of that on your own. And, you know, maybe this is a way for, you know, a little compromise here, but then the community comes in to support you, and we help you look for the grants. And we don't just leave you be because there's something special about that program, and it, it should be accessible for everybody, but it also needs to be functional for you. There, there's two sides, so I'm not saying no. But that's why they came here to talk. It's, we need to have discussions and find a proper solution and, but there, there is something special there. But I think we don't wanna forget that there's a need. And then you also wanna have structure, like you were saying, at five o'clock. We need to have our families there so you could, and you're in.
And that's what I was hoping, is that you guys could have the discussion to help me. I'm not great at this, I'm trying. I think we're doing a good job.
I would like to just interject because Coris and Tammy have grown the program with very little work off of. In my first year, you know, the program really struggled to sustain itself. And when they stepped in, it has just blossomed. And I will speak as a parent myself, in a school district that does not offer before or after-school care, and how difficult it can be to find childcare because you don't have staff that are available, and you have staff who are willing to do these hours. And then to watch them be taxed with the, the hard work of looking for donations and trying to, you know, find ways to grow the program with, you know, no funding, it, it breaks my heart. And, and when they work so hard. So I, I, I support what Coris and Tammy are trying to do. And, and I hope that, you know, if it's not the full percent increase that they're looking for, that we can find a way to help them.
So this isn't anything we're voting on tonight, so I think the message is received that we are.
It is.
Yeah, no, I just had a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
Doesn't sound like we're gonna get there, but that's all right. All right, go ahead, Chris.
Um, I'll just say, first of all, I, this is nothing against anybody, you know, money-wise, but I think the costs are cheap, to be honest. I don't think you can find a place to watch your child for that cost, personally.
It currently is the cheapest in the area. We tried to find schools that were comparable to North Brookfield. We did get in touch with one, didn't get any messages back from them, but we're trying to make sure that it's similar. But there are some places that are very expensive.
I don't disagree. With that being said, one family with two kids, it's gonna cost a hundred and seventy dollars more a month for the free and reduced, which is the one that I was looking at, which are most likely the families that are gonna be affected by it the most.
That's the bulk of our people.
So if they have two kids, that's a hundred and seventy dollars a month. Do we know if there are families that are choosing not to use it now because they can't afford to? Or do we know if there are families now that won't be able to if this goes up?
I don't want this to become a cost prohibitive. I want the kids, and I don't want parents freaking out.
I know, I know, and I get where you're coming from, too.
I just wanna make sure that the kids are getting what they deserve.
Coris and I haven't had any communication from families saying that we would love to participate in it or we just can't afford it. We haven't had that feedback.
Do we know if there's any families where this will be a reason where they opt out?
I don't have that data, but I'm sure it's something we can explore.
Absolutely.
I would just be interested, because I mean, obviously, I don't think you can find someplace to watch your child for that price. And if people can afford it, in my opinion, I think it's well worth to make the program better.
I have no problems coming up with something, so if a family comes and says, we can't afford it, you know, that is too much. I have no problems finding some way to make it happen. Because it's not, my job isn't to mess with parents or, you know, do anything with the kids. It's just about keeping them safe and happy until they can go home.
So the other question I have is, do the students ever work on homework in the program and stuff like that?
Every day from two-thirty to three o'clock.
That's awesome.
Homework, and if they're done with homework, then it's reading.
So can I just say, I support the idea of having high school students help for two reasons? Because I know you mentioned it as some of the other things, is I'm assuming that the high school students need community service, and I think that that's a really good way to get them to help tutor students with homework and stuff like that. And the other thing is, I know in other schools, they do like buddy systems, where like first grade is buddied with like a fifth grade, second is with a sixth grade. And they do it for bullying purposes, and I feel like this is another way to kind of bring in different age kids together to maybe help support maybe, I guess, the school community that maybe works together a little bit more and kinda, they have somebody that they can talk to, look up to, et cetera.
Can you have someone from the high school ask if high school people could do community service hours with us or anything else? The concern was, would it turn into another student to watch? So I think we could vet everybody to doing that. That is absolutely.
Like applications and stuff.
Yep.
I think it's a cool opportunity for the upperclassmen, kids too.
I just have, just two things to, to piggyback on that as a parent who does participate. One, part of it is the kids do wanna have fun. So I'm just gonna speak up for my own child. The homework is done, but the socialization piece is, is huge, particularly coming out of COVID. Our kids are still dealing with, I'm gonna just say that, with the effects of COVID. It is their chance to run and play and finally be kids. And the other thing, personally, the, the fifty percent increase for my family, the two hundred dollars per month would be a hardship. So put in gas, I have, you know, you have a spouse that's traveling. You know, if you haven't pumped gas lately, and I'm saying the ten dollars. Again, I'm not saying that we don't do something, but, you know, if my daughter or another child wants to do a dance or another activity, that's another fee. You know, we're living in a society now where granola bars, no kidding, are five dollars a box. So I just think there's, keep the conversation going to, to compromise, but assume that, you know, sometimes families struggle and they don't necessarily, and I'm not talking about me, but you don't, there's no evidence of that as well. So we wanna keep the community as a whole, and the beauty of that program, there is something very special. And again, it's a need, as, as a working mom, I need it. So I think it's multifaceted.
I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, do you have to stand up? But I've, I'm tired, I have to do my apologies.
Yeah, I'm just here, just to support. I have two kids that are in the program, and for me, it's, homework gets done, you know, reading gets done. My son was, he's a very, very shy kid, and it really opened him up. My daughter, she loves it, she's second grade, and she's just all of the, like, she absolutely loves it. And me, I work fifty-five, sixty hours a week, so I have to have it. So generally, this is early to get home, so, to be there to support them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
School committee reports? Any school committee reports? Uh, financial reports?
Okay, I just wanted, I'm gonna pass down a piece of paper. Pass that down for me. About, we received that email from the town accountants about what the end of the school year spending would look like, and how much the town has, and how much we could balance with them. So Michelle and I spent the weekend, you know, continuing to put data into our system. Before we got here, the, none of the payrolls and the warrants were actually put into the system. So we're trying to, you know, get us up to speed. So, and it takes, it takes quite a bit of time. There's, you know, six, I think, six steps per each payroll or whatever it is.
Nine.
No, oh, nine steps, okay. So she showed me how to do some, so I, I did some work this weekend. So I just wanted to show you that when I, we made some anticipated costs for the next two payrolls and the next two warrants, which brought us to about a million dollars. And then when I look at the grants that we sent access now to the end of June, it looks like we will balance with the town with perhaps using about five thousand dollars in school choice money. So this is, I have somebody coming in to help us balance the books next Friday to make sure that this is actually, you know, if we have to move money around or anything to support that. So I did wanna let you know that when I had a conversation, you know, when I, Michelle and I had some conversations, and we talked about, you know, what does the next, what does the rest of the year look like as far as anticipatory cost? And it looks like we're, whoever, you know, the budget from last year was pretty tight, and you can see that it's pretty lean. But we've, you know, based on what we have for grants and what's spent out so far, we are, we are on track to balance at the end of the year. Did you have some questions? Because I, I'm meeting with a grants advisor as well on Wednesday to make sure that we draw all that down by, by the end of the week. Those are my, that's what I have on that. Questions?
I don't know that Michelle has to do it right now, but my concern is moving forward. And I think this is good enough time to talk about the NEDU, but if we continue to draw and draw and draw from a lot of these offset accounts, I feel like we're gonna be in a situation where we don't have a choice to do that ever again. And I think moving forward, I don't see it being self-sustainable the way that we are pulling from that. And I know we don't really have an option, but it seems like if we withdraw more money from some of these offset accounts this year, that next year we're really gonna be in trouble.
These are grants that we get pretty much every year. For example, Title II, Title IV, Title I, these are grants that, that are entitlement grants. So we do get some of these grants on a yearly basis. It's the ESSR grants and, and some of the other, we also get small rules grant, which is about another thirty-eight thousand dollars now, actually put on here because that's for next year. But we've expended it this year. So some of these grants are grants that we do get yearly for, for, for specific money. We have circuit breaker money that is also given to us that helps us anticipate some of the costs we do with special, so some of that money we do get every year that we actually put in for offsets. It would be additional funding, like the ESSR money that we're using to offset, that, that won't be in the future. Some of these are, are fixed. Some of these are fixed.
And student choice. And student choice.
And, and.
And I'm not, I'm not saying you have a chance or a choice at this point, because I know there's only so many places you can pull from.
Right.
But I think there's a bigger issue in terms of funding.
I don't disagree. So it looks like we're on track to balance at the end of the year. So that, that was helpful. I had a conversation with Mr. Ral and, on Monday. So I, I went through this and, and I think we have a good handle. And I shared it with, with the town accountant, and she gave me a little bit of feedback and, and some of the things that she had put on there, we'd already had anticipated costs. We'd already had anticipated costs, or so. I feel fairly confident that, that this will be, we won't have to use that much of school, school choice money to, to make sure that we balance. I feel pretty confident right now. And I'll have more information for you, um, like I said, I can send it out, uh, the end of the week. I have somebody coming in on Friday. So hopefully, we will be able to see that. Somebody who's an expert in eye visions, because we haven't had a lot of, um, training, Michelle and myself, so we're kind of learning as we go on how to get that in there. So, uh, she's been doing a great job, honestly. I don't know how she can do it. She does a great job. So you can also see that we've got some deposits coming in, and if you take a look at some of the AMPM program, you know, one of the things that, oh, that, uh, um, Corinne was talking about, we wanna make sure that's self-sustaining. So I don't want, you know, I don't want that to go into account, because we don't have general fund to, to pay for, for those services. So that's one of the reasons she's looking for an increase in that particular, uh, those particular programs. And preschool, again, is pretty self-sustaining, so that is money we don't have to, to look at as far as deposits. So, um, the rest of their vendor warrants that you sign on a regular basis, um, and then, uh, that's about what I have in there. Any questions? Oh, my report's next? Okay.
Usually print this out, so I have it separate, and I forgot to do it before. So superintendent's report, please.
Sure. Donna Holmes, our food service manager, uh, will be sending a letter home to all families at the end of the school year explaining the school lunch program. Um, this letter encourages families to apply for free and reduced lunch. Um, as I mentioned last month, we still don't have, um, or have not received any notification of what the program's gonna look like or if they're gonna extend it at all next year. Um, so letters will be going home to families, and we post it on our website. Um, again, we'd have to wait to see, um, you know, what the cost will be. Um, I believe when, before we went to the free lunch program, I think it was three dollars for, for, um, regular lunch. So being the cost of food and, uh, and supplies, it's probably gonna have to go up unless they extend the free lunch program. So that letter will be coming out to families, and we'll put that out. Um, we have seen an uptick in COVID cases this month. There has been seventeen cases at the high school and sixteen cases at the elementary school. I think we have a couple more since I actually, um, did this. I sent this out on Friday. And I believe we have three additional staffs at the elementary school, so up to nineteen at the elementary school. And that is students and staff. So I wanna thank Maureen Floyd. She is our, uh, lead nurse. Um, and received our medical delegation certi- certification, uh, which is not an easy thing to, to do. So she did that for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, great job, Maureen. Um, any educator who has applied for emergency licensure, they have extended that until next June, twenty-twenty-three. Um, I sent out an email to staff about how you can, um, get the help you need, uh, and they can stop by my office about getting provisional or initial licensure. Um, North Brookfield Elementary School was featured in, uh, Desi's STEM newsletter on Earth Day. I included the link. If you wanna click on the link, click, click on that link. You can see our students, um, on Earth Day. So that was a great, um, opportunity for us to show what we have here to offer to, um, the state, um, and, and our surrounding communities. I continue to participate in the strategic planning board for, uh, SWEAP, who is our educational collaborative. And these meetings are held at the Dudley campus once a month. Um, and our latest meetings have focused on, um, curriculum development and alignment. Um, SWEAP had a final board meeting on Friday, May twentieth. Um, and they are still struggling to find certified personnel to fill positions. And as a result, they want to let all of us know that, um, we may, um, not be able to get some of the services for our special ed students that we need. Uh, they are struggling as well to look for teachers, um, you know, speech and language, um, hearing impaired, so they are also struggling as well. So that may impact us and help, be less of a, help us accommodate some of our students with need next year. So that's something that we have to keep aware of as well. Um, actually, I had something about the next regionalization meeting taking place on Wednesday, but that is now canceled. So there is no regionalization meeting this Wednesday night. That has been canceled and rescheduled. I do not have a date yet. I received that right before we got here. And you can see in your packet, that is the letter that, um, Donna's gonna be sending home, and it will be placed on our, um, our website. We'll wait until after the students receive it, but we don't have our next school committing, meeting until after the school is out. So I didn't want to, uh, put it out before, um, the students got it. And that's all that I have.
Any questions on that stuff?
I have just a quick question. Um, do you have an idea of how many, uh, teachers you have working under the emergency licensure? General idea?
I don't know. Um. I'm thinking maybe six. Do you have, do you, how do you think, six? Yeah, I don't know. I, I can find out for you. I really don't know. I can think of four off the top of my head, so I threw a couple in. I, I don't know. I don't have an idea. We have some special ed, and I think that's the ones we were worried about the most, the special ed ones, and they have.
Go, go.
Four to six.
Yeah, but that's what, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you. That's a good question.
You had a very good one.
Yep.
All right. Administrator's report.
Thank you. Um, so starting off, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Blumenthal, Ms. Joyce. Back on May seventh and eighth, we had our, um, virtual production of Grease. First time we've had a, a production in a couple of years. So thank you to all of our students and those two, uh, staff members who put on the production. Uh, if you didn't see it, it was, there was two showings on Saturday the seventh and one showing on Sunday, the eighth, and the students did a fantastic job. Um, as Joe mentioned already, uh, we had a, a lot of special outings during Teacher Appreciation Week. As I mentioned last month, we finished up our collaborative NEAS visit in of April. Um, so it was a great way to celebrate some of the hard work of our staff members. Uh, Stuko did a fantastic job once again of celebrating our entire staff. Uh, they did a special, uh, staff breakfast on the last day, which was baked and cooked and made to order by our Stuko members. So thank you to all of them for all their efforts. And thank you to all of our staff members for all their efforts all year long. Um, as I mentioned, NEAS got our, our visit back in, in April. Um, just so you're all aware, we should be receiving our final report from NEAS in about six weeks. So I'm looking to, forward to seeing that in early June. Uh, that will be shared with all of you, will also be shared with the public. And that will be a guide for us, for our improvement plan, a part of our group plan over the next two to three years, on what we can do, uh, to grow as a school and as a district. Um, I also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Hatch. Uh, we had our, our junior prom last, two weekends ago, May thirteenth, at the Salem Cross Inn. Again, we brought this event back, you know, coming out of COVID a little bit here. We are bringing back all of our social events. I want to congratulate Matt Adams and Sophia, uh, Curnley for being, uh, honored as the prom king, queen, respectively. Congratulations to those two students. It was a very nice event, which, uh, our, our students really appreciate and a great time. Um, we also had on Friday, May thirteenth as well, our North Brookfield High School Student Council at our annual lock-in. Uh, this is an event that they hold annually to basically educate and teach our younger members how to become better school and student leaders. Uh, so this is an event that is a lot of team build exercises, there's a lot of, uh, conversation around student communication, uh, and a lot of fun activities for our Stuko, um, students. And then lastly, uh, for May, and June's a, a crazy month, and we'll talk about that in June with all of our senior activities and graduation. But tomorrow evening, uh, we have our music and arts night here at the elementary school, starting at seven P M. So Mr. Blumenthal and Mr. Martinez will be showcasing some of our art from our students and also our music and our chorus productions from our students in both middle and high school. So we hope you can attend. It's a free event. Starts at seven o'clock here in the elementary auditorium. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? All right. The floor is yours, Mrs. Priestley.
Thank you. So we also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, the May second through sixth week. Um, the huge shout out to the PTO for all of their efforts in celebrating our teachers and staff. Um, a lot of food, a lot of treats. Um, we had a masseuse come in, do five-minute massages. It was glorious. Um, so thank you to the PTO. I did want to highlight, um, Jay Nankita from Playful Engineers. He is sponsored by the North Brookfield Cultural Council Grant. Um, and he presents free, um, workshops for students. Um, we did pay for the cost of some of the materials, um, but his presentation, um, and the activity that the kids did was all free, sponsored by the grant. Um, so that was awesome. That was on May fourth. Um, we also had last week our first ever math night, which was an awesome night. Uh, so thank you to all the volunteers who, um, who came. And a huge shout out to Mr. Beckerly, our grade five math teacher who organized it. Um, he, he did it all. It was, it was wonderful, and a ton of staff came. It was great. Uh, we do have our June ninth summer reading kickoff as an annual event, um, another, uh, evening event. Um, and our arts night is on June seventh, so those are some upcoming events.
Excellent. Thank you. I will say the math night was very fun.
It was fun.
Mr. Canada likes to work with projectiles.
I do projectiles.
Yes.
I was here for stomp rockets on Earth Day and then paper airplanes on math night. I was actually surprised. I was, things you're not supposed to usually do in school, that's why. I was actually surprised at the number of kids that, I guess it's a testament to the well-behaved children of the elementary school. They didn't know how to make paper airplanes. But they were eager to learn, and they did great.
I haven't seen any in the school building since, so.
I made them clean them all up. All right, so we do have a, a report from, uh, Anna Robert. Do you want, do you wanna read it?
Um, it's, it's, um.
Read the highlights?
Just the highlight. She just wants to remind families that we have, um, CPAC meeting, uh, May thirty-first at the North Brookfield Elementary School, uh, yeah, North Brookfield School Library. And then, um, to let us know that she finished the tiered focus monitor, and, uh, she also submitted the circuit breaker, which is additional money we get for special ed that has been submitted. And then just to let us know that fifteen families participated in the preschool screening for this month. That's exciting.
And then we have the, uh, facilities report, which is, do you want me to read it real quick?
You can read that one, yep.
Says, uh, "We're in the final stretch of the school year. We're working on keeping up with the groundwork, softball game prep and school events. We're looking for substitute custodians. I have a couple, but it would be better with one or two more as they are not always available. We have a broken panel in the playground. The replacement part's about sixteen hundred dollars. For now, we have secured it so the kids can play and not get hurt. As we continue with the budget discussion, I wanna let everyone know oil for next year, if this current trend continues, could be financially draining. We've averaged just under seventy thousand gallons between both buildings. Let's hope this fuel prices will turn around." Respectfully, Martin Shaw, Facilities Director. So, yeah. The gas prices aren't just at the pump, they're at the, uh, truck that fills up the giant tank here, too, so. Something that we're all very, I think all of us here at this table are very much aware of the.
We were just having that conversation, yeah.
Yep. Zoom all the way back to the top here.
Um, two thousand twenty-three budget.
All right, twenties. Twenty twenty-three budget discussion?
Okay, um, um, we attended, well, I attended the FinCom meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we presented our budget, and, and I, I really thank the school committee for presenting our budget in full and accepting it. So, um, we, I thank you because the teachers appreciate that, you know, all the positions are gonna be saved. But as we know, you know, um, even though we have final say, sometimes, uh, FinCom, um, and, and the Board of Selectmen, you know, have the fiscal responsibility to make sure that they adhere to their town's budget. So, um, even though, um, you know, our budget was fairly lean, they, um, came back with initial, um, reduction of four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, um, which was, you know, gonna be a huge cut for us. Um, when we attended the FinCom meeting, Mr. Grant and Mr. Hickman also attended it. They were, um, um, I guess gracious enough to give us an additional hundred, uh, thousand dollars out, out of their, uh, funding. So our final reductions, uh, for this year will have to be three hundred and ninety-three dollars, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Three ninety-three, six fifty-one, forty-four. So that's what the town has asked us to, to take a look at. And I put a couple of things in your packet. I'm gonna pass another one around as well. Because I know that people are concerned about losing positions. That's not something I was interested in doing. Um, we had a couple of options. Um, we could use up all of the ESSR funding, um, the remaining ESSR funding, um, a, as something we could have used. Um, and that would have left us with, uh, next year, a, a huge deficit, and the town would have to try to fund all that. Um, or we could take in part of the, um, ESSR funding. Um, or we could have just, um, taken none of it and, and, uh, cut the whole three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So cutting the whole thing is not something I wanted to do. Um, and working with the admin team who, I have to say, the admin team really fought for, uh, for using some additional, uh, ESSR funding, because they really, um, see the value of keeping our programs robust if we wanna bring more students, and it's important that we continue to offer programs. So I'm suggesting that we, um, offset an additional, um, hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of our ESSR funding, um, to, to, um, ensure that we have a little bit more money to, to, um, keep in our budget so that we have less reductions. Um, and by doing that, um, some of the possible reductions I'm thinking about is reducing it to two, uh, bringing the four buses down to two buses, which would save us about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So the students that live within walking distance will unfortunately have to, have to walk, and I know it, it's very difficult. Um, but it really does save us, uh, staffing positions. Um, and, um, looking at cutting, uh, just three support staff and one teaching position. That, that's my proposal, by using some of the ESSR funding. Those are my recommendations. So as I said, I'm recommending taking additional ESSR money to alleviate, um, if I had, if I didn't use any additional ESSR money, we would have to cut, um, three support staff and three teaching positions. And I wanted to really keep the teaching positions, um, safer. So if you take a look at the blue, those positions I'm thinking about, um, looking at. I mean, that is still using some school choice money. Uh, and again, school choice is down as well, so we're only gonna be receiving about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand next year. So we're not gonna have that to tap into as well. Um, we put quite a bit of it into next year's budget, um, about four hundred thousand. So, um, you know, we really are gonna be in, uh, dire straits at the end of next year, for sure. Thoughts? Discussion, questions?
Well, I, I make a motion that we accept the budget as proposed by the superintendent for the purposes of discussion. Now.
Now I can go. Okay.
Well, if that's to the chair.
Okay. You're in now.
We have a motion in second, so we can discuss.
All right, so I would like, and I've said this last year, I'm on record for saying that reducing the buses is non-negotiable. The safety of our children comes first. I'm an educator. Please hear that. Um, the roads, I live here, it's not a criticism. We do not have perfect roads. We do not have perfect sidewalks. I do not want to have children that are on these buses saying that on these, I don't walk down these roads recreationally. So then the other option, like I said, was like, well, we'll just have two buses. We'll make them crowded. We can't do that. Safety of our children comes first. We do not have roads and sidewalks that are safe. It's dark sometimes. I have sat out at the bus stop myself in the dark. Uh, they come whipping up my road. I do not live far here like crazy. Um, we live in a rural community. We have to have our buses. I stand by having four buses. I'm sorry, that's my hill. I'm gonna die on four buses.
I just wanna say something to that. Um, I live probably two miles outside of the bus route, but we don't put our kids on the bus because they would have to walk in a street with those sidewalks to get to the bus stop, so we aren't utilizing it and we're spending the money on it. So that's, there's, there's two sides to it, you know? The, the bus routes right now, as they're set up, aren't valuable to a lot of families. So if maybe we looked at doing things differently, it might be more valuable to more families. Just throwing that side out there, too.
No, it's okay.
And there's, I know there's a lot of families like that, that choose not to do the bus if they, you know, can make something else work because it doesn't make any sense. Wouldn't, we still have to go to this, we have to leave our house anyway with the kids or to go somewhere to the bus stop. You know, I can't ask a six and eight-year-old to walk up a street where their cars are going fifty miles an hour, so. So we're actually wasting money, in my opinion.
I mean, unfortunately, you know, we're tasked with, with reducing the budget, so, you know, these are the ones I thought would be. Yeah, again, it's important that the, the safety is critical. I agree with you. Um, but at this, at the, at the behest of, of cutting additional staff hours and, and reducing our programs, I, you know, I didn't, uh, I, I, I don't have a, a better solution. Our budget is pretty lean. If you took what, looking at the app, the offset for the end of this year, I mean, we barely bought supplies this year. Every bit of supply we bought came out of a grant. I mean, our budget really is for, um, salaries and special ed services, um, transportation and, uh.
No, I'd just like to say one of the things, I think this goes back to my comment before. I think there's a bigger problem here than just this budget. Um, but I know one of the questions that we were asked when we were talking at the finance committee was, have you applied for any grants? And I think when we were talking after about, you know, like, why we can't, I think that it makes sense to kind of explain certain things. Where when you apply for a lot of the grants to start new programs or to get funding from the state, um, to do a lot of this, one of the criteria, as you explained, is to show that you can support it after. They don't wanna put money into a program that you let die year two. Um, and part of the idea of starting a new program is that, you know, if the funding's good for two years. And part of the idea of starting a new program is that, you know, if the funding's good for two years, you might not see the turnaround to have that fully supported in that two-year period. So I feel like there's a bigger problem where we can't necessarily apply for the grants because we don't have the financial support to keep the programs going. And, I mean, we're talking about cutting buses, cutting positions. None of this is going to help attract more kids to our district.
Absolutely not.
And I just, I feel like there's a bigger issue here that's out of our control.
And after, after twenty twenty-four, ESER's not going to be there without that. And as we talked about during the finance committee, after twenty twenty-four, there's going to be no more ESER money. So that is going to be, I mean, we're getting five hundred thousand dollars for the next two, five hundred seventy thousand dollars to help us for the next two years. And after that, I don't see any miracle coming to give us another six hundred thousand dollars to help us out. So I, I think that there's bigger, again, there's bigger problems, but we can only focus on the here and now.
Yeah, I got that.
Last year, we, last year, if I recall, we took the two buses came from the school choice money. That was what we voted on to make that happen, which depletes that account further. So now, I mean, just looking quickly at this, the, the buses would come out of the remaining ESER funds to balance this, and we still have.
We have nothing.
And then we have nothing for next year for an offset.
Absolutely nothing for next year.
That'd mean we're using the entire ESER balance this year.
That's a possibility. We have, we discussed it as an admin team. And, and, you know, we discussed it. It's something to go.
Yeah.
We're still pulling from a fixed amount of offsets. That's ultimately what it comes down to. I know it takes more than us to talk about it, but it doesn't seem like that conversation is happening, in my opinion.
Well, in all honesty, we have two choices. We can either approve this night or we can send the superintendent, the superintendent back to make other options and we'll have to have another meeting to approve that budget before it goes to school, before it goes to town meeting on the second, so, or third, sorry. So those are really the only two options we have here. And, I mean, I don't.
I mean, I suppose you could use the rest of the ESER money.
No, I understand, but we, I don't know as a committee that we have the ability to go in and start telling you where to pull money from and what to do. I think what, what we have is your recommendation. We need to get the vote for this recommendation or give you recommendations as to what to go back and do and then come back to us with another proposal. But I don't think that we have the authority to sit here and start nitpicking line items either. We can tell you that we don't like this, we don't like that, and we would like you to go back and work something else out, but.
But keep in mind, June first is, you know, what the teachers know before June first.
Understood.
And I personally, I'd like more information on the buses because I, I would think since COVID, there are a lot of families that may have stopped taking the bus, the bus and maybe don't now. How many do we have actually? I know someone mentioned crowding the buses. With two or three buses, it may not actually be crowded. I mean, it's something to look at. We just need that, we need more information.
Sure, I can definitely look at that.
You know?
Yep.
So the other thing we could do is we could approve this and then.
And then something changes.
And then we come back to it after the town meeting, like we did last year. And, you know, if we, if we decide the buses are something that can be done. Basically, what's on the table right now is buses. We can approve this as is, as Ron made the motion. And then we can decide whether we end up using ESER funds to add one bus or.
And who knows? We may end up with more funding from the state too, from the cherry sheets, right? So I, when I was talking to the state reps, they were telling me that they had put in more money for support for the schools. So let's see if that actually comes to fruition. But, I mean, if that does, then maybe we're, you know, talking in circles here. But, but for now, we can't, we have to, we have a fiscal responsibility to bring something to the town that meets the obligation of what they're asking us to do. And I don't know that we have any other option at this moment. Now, again, if something changes between now and the third and, and you want to ask for a special meeting through the chair, I mean, I'm perfectly happy to do that as well, but I don't see that we have much of a choice in, in tonight's vote. That's all I'm saying, so.
We're operating on a budget given to us by the town based on what they have for money at this point, so.
I mean, we, we all voted for the budget we put forward, so. I mean, that's, well, I didn't vote for it, but you did vote for it.
But there's no guarantee, so if I vote for this, there's no guarantee we're going to keep those buses.
No.
So I just, I, we, we had this discussion before about the buses. It's just, can we need to, we need to get kids to school.
Right. At this point, what we're voting on is an approved number from the town saying they can fund this much money. And then we will need to see if they get more money from the cherry sheets, then we can put some of this back in easily. Or we have to decide whether we use some of these ESER funds or something after the fact. But basically, the town is telling us, this is what you're getting. And we can approve that number and then revisit whether we add the buses back in or.
Or the staff?
Yeah, or the staff, or if we get additional money, we, we put both of them in there, so. I mean, it's, nothing on this sheet is, makes anyone comfortable with losing. These are all.
So what does a no vote do?
A no vote does not approve the current budget. And then we need to, we need to.
Come back and make.
The proposed, the proposed current, but the proposed revision to the current budget, which we approved at the previous meetings about that. So if we, if we vote no on this, then we do not, at this point, we still have the other budget that we approved. But there's, what we have is a budget that the town will not.
Support.
Support.
Yeah, can I just say something too? The other thing is, if you, if we vote yes on accepting this budget and there are certain things that we disagree with, we also have the option to pull more money from those offset accounts. We have that control, correct?
Again, we could take more out of school choice, but again.
No, but moving forward, I mean, something that we could propose to the town where we can financially make it work and then basically we pull more money from those offsets at another meeting or approve it if we feel like we can't really do this.
Again, I mean, like I said, as, as Ron stated, I mean, the cherry sheets may come back higher. I mean, we may have different staff coming in and going and, and the numbers may, may, so, you know, hopefully through attrition stuff, some of these cuts will not happen. And, you know, the busing is, is one of them, but that is a big amount. But technically, yeah. I mean, again, there's not a lot of offsets we have to work with at this point.
I'm with Chrissy. I don't like the idea of the buses either. And obviously, I don't like the idea of getting rid of any teachers because I feel like we're doing the opposite of what we're trying to do.
No, I agree.
But you can't take money out of nowhere.
You're either your behavior.
Sure we are.
What, what move the motion?
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve this revised budget.
Could we know how much of the ESER funds are being spent and how many, which, which particular staff are being cut?
We are using, so three, three twenty, three hundred twenty-four thousand dollars of ESER funds out of five seventy. I, I would prefer not to put the staff positions out without having conversations with them. I don't think that's something we should be doing. I mean, I don't do that, right?
I would agree.
I would agree with that. I think that's wrong to do.
I mean, typically, it's the positions.
At this point, what we're voting for is the revised budget with these as your suggested way to reconcile this budget with what the town is approving. The motion on the floor is whether we are accepting this current revision to the budget. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just, I'll just say, because I'm with you, I don't like the idea of it, but where else does it come from? And, you know, if it's something that we are really that upset about in June, I think at the same time, we can say we'd like to, you know, discuss bringing some of these stuff back with offsets. But I think saying no at this point doesn't help us at all. And I think saying yes, we still have the option to fix what we're, what we're not happy with, with the suggestion.
I, I would agree with that, for sure.
But I think mathematically, we just have to show that it's possible and then we can basically drain offset accounts more if we have to.
That's exactly it. You're actually approving.
As much as you, I don't like the, I, I'm with you. I can see the frustration in your face. I feel the same way.
Well, I feel like it's, it's, I'm going to say ethical, but like even looking at like the behavioral intervention, you know, the specialist, you know, good things have been going on and, you know, I said last year, you got to get the kids in and then you, you, you want your staff. I just, I just think there's so many hardships out there for families right now.
Yep, just don't know where else you're going to get them from.
I, I know, but I feel like I'm, I have to, there's a family out there that is saying, don't cut the, I need to represent them.
I don't disagree with you.
I believe we don't have to revive busing.
I know.
I think a lot, most of us agree that we need buses. But we can also look at reorganizing and how, like it, do you know, do we know the capacity of each bus now? We, we can look at that stuff. We can, you know, that's, it doesn't necess, because you're cutting bus numbers, it may not actually take, you know, we can look at different routes and.
And that is whatever.
We pay, we pay the bus company a lot of money to do those things, to map out routes and.
I'd just like to say too, real quick, the reason that buses is being talked about, not everyone sees what we're seeing. It's by far the largest number, which is why it has nothing to do with not valuing teachers.
Right, it has nothing to do with not valuing buses.
It's by far the largest number, which we would have to pull from somewhere else. And I just, I think that's coming across wrong that we keep talking about buses. I, so I just want to say.
And that's why it was, that's why it was on the table last year too. Because it was the biggest number when you have a, a number that we're being asked to close this kind of a gap.
Yeah, Chrissy, I would certainly talk with the bus company, see what we can do to alleviate some of that. And perhaps just, you know, I mean, some of the buses are, are quite filled, but, you know, we can certainly see what we can do. Maybe when you bring down three buses, you know, maybe we could do something like that. But again, it's a number we're looking at.
Can I move the motion again?
All right, again, we got a motion on the table. We're on the floor. We have second. Is there any further discussion or shall we, Ron has moved it to vote, so. All in favor of approving this budget? All opposed? Matt, did you abstain or did you vote?
I voted yes.
Okay. I didn't see it. Ron, now Ron's blocking you from me, so.
I was trying to get out of the way.
I voted yes.
All right, so three to two, because you voted opposed.
Correct.
All right. So the motion passes and I believe we have a lot more conversation to have on this. I voted very reluctantly, yes.
Thank you again. We'll continue to work for it and, and, I don't want to see any of these things go, so we'll see what we can do. So the next, oh, go ahead.
Yep, so now we do have some donations to approve under new business.
Yep, we have a thousand dollars from Hannaford Helps. So we were, again, a donation approval from Hannaford for a thousand dollars. So I thank everybody who goes to Hannaford's and has their name in the, for our, for our schools. So if you, if you haven't, I'm pleading with families to put your names in to support the high school and the elementary school because these, this money is really helpful to us, to help us offset some of our expenses. So there's a thousand dollars. Do you do it individually or do it together?
Uh, we can do them together.
And then we have nine hundred sixty-six dollars from theschoolstore.com. I'm going to have Sarah talk a little about this because Dresden explained it a little bit to me.
Sure, it's a fundraiser that we run all year long and it's called schoolstore.com. And families can go on and buy items for themselves, you know, to kick back to the school. They can also buy gift cards for the teachers, when the teachers can go and buy gifts, buy items for their classrooms. But all the profits from that, we get a percentage. So that check comes in peer out of it through the year. So this is just one.
And that seven thousand dollars is throughout the year, is not, we only get nine hundred sixty-six dollars this year.
Yeah, that's a total for as long as we've been working with them, so. And I don't know.
Just need to make that clear.
Since before I started, this has been a, a, a.
Make a motion to accept the donations.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you to Hannaford and schoolstore.com. Now, I misspoke earlier. We are talking, revisiting the after-school program price increase.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, so we have a chance to look at maybe some variation in those numbers. That's.
I'll say it.
I third.
All right, well, the motion is to table it till the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye. Is there executive session tonight? Can I make a motion?
Do you have executive session still?
Second.
Oh, okay.
So you have a motion in second.
All right, so do we, do you guys motion and second?
I motion in second.
Oh, perfect. All right, all in favor of a journey? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
So we're waiting on congratulations. Let's get a second.